We're up to Simon Templar. Are you here this evening? Thank you. If you could just come up to the lectern, just mention your name and your suburb. You have two minutes to speak on your questions.
Okay, I'm Simon Templar from Reservoir. My first question is why is council enforcing the eviction of a disabled pensioner from a commercial one zone property that has been rented private as private housing since 2011? Question two, why is council enforcing the eviction of a resident from a commercial zone one property that has been rented residentially since 2011? And question three, is there any way that a property in the municipality can be rezoned residential to prevent the eviction of a disabled pensioner?
Thank you. I'll hand that over to our officers. Thank you.
Thanks for your questions, Simon. We can't share specific information about this case due to it being an ongoing investigation and because of council's obligations under the Privacy and Data Protection Act. Regarding your questions one and two, as the responsible authority under the Planning and Environment Act, council has an important duty to efficiently administer and enforce the planning scheme. So council will certainly always educate our community on planning controls and why it's important to comply with them. And we will, as a last resort, enforce compliance. Regarding your question three, commercial one zoning is the standard zoning for strip shopping centres such as this one. And a planning permit is usually required. And we don't have any record of a permit application for this process.
Thank you, Simon. Appreciate it. Do I have Wendy Liddle in the audience this evening? If not, I'll hand that over to our officers to ask her three questions on her behalf.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor, Wendy has submitted two questions. The first question is, for what projects or developments does the Darabben Council seek funding or intend to seek funding through the state government-led Twenty Minute Neighbourhood Initiative? Include projects or developments seeking partial or full funding? Include any current or intended projects, developments, initiatives, committees or advisory bodies? Include possible funding for any current or new projects, development initiatives, committees or advisory bodies? The second question is, given Australia is a parliamentary democracy, a growing number of people are concerned about the interference of foreign organisations, such as the World Economic Forum, the WHO and the UN, which are all unelected committees. In light of these concerns, can the council please confirm if the Urban Design Framework and the Streets for People project encompass any of the 17 Sustainable Development Goals as outlined in Plan Melbourne, which were developed by the United Nations in 2015?
Thank you for the question, Wendy. The Twenty Minute Neighbourhood Programme is about using land use and development planning principles to support the places we use and visit every day. It aims to give people the freedom and the choice to do more things locally. It also aims to make it easier for people to travel to different places across the city. So I understand there may be some community can fear that the 20-minute city will stop people leaving their neighbourhood. And I want to reassure you that this is not the case. So Darabben Council is one of several municipalities that has received funding through the Victorian Government's Twenty Minute Neighbourhood Municipal Strategic Planning Project. We've received $70,000 to help examine the features and facilities of Darabben's neighbourhood activity centres. Regarding your question two, yes, Australia is a signatory to the United Nations 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. The Metropolitan Strategy Plan Melbourne forms part of all planning schemes, including Darabben's. And consequently, it informs many strategies and plans.
Thank you very much. Next person I have is Richard Too, which I believe is not attending this evening. But I'll just ask, is Richard in the gallery? If not, I'll hand that over to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Richard has submitted two questions for this evening. The first one is, what is the council's specific rules concerning dogs being leashed in public areas outside of dog parks? His second question is, will the council consider sending out leaflets flyers to enforce this? Unfortunately, residents in and around our area appear very entitled. And when approached, demand, they have to see paperwork from the council to acknowledge it is not appropriate for dogs to be off-leash.
Thank you for your question, Richard. Responsible ownership of dogs in public areas falls within the Domestic Animals Act 1994, where it states that a dog owner must have a dog on a lead or be in control when a dog is outside of a dog park. So responsible pet ownership information is available on council's website. And there are multiple social media posts advocating for the safety of both pets and people. This includes educating pet owners during regular park controls by council's local law officers. And each year, council also sends animal registration renewals out to dog owners. And that includes information as well about responsible pet ownership.
Thank you to our officers. Next person I have on our list of speakers is Vula Papathopoulos. Is Vula available? If not, I'll hand over to our officers to ask Vula's questions. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor. We would like to ask for some help with the ongoing problems regarding parking opposite my very frail and elderly parents' home at Dennis Street, Northkirk. The parking section on the side of the park seems to now become a storage facility for caravans, boats, buses, trailers and unregistered vehicles, many of which have been parked there for over two years. Can we please rectify and solve this problem by putting time parking restrictions with a two- or three-hour time limit?
Thank you, Vula, for your question. And I understand that the manager of the Sustainable Transport Unit called you this morning to describe the process for requesting a parking change. Please don't hesitate to reach out for the transport team if you have any further questions or need further support. I'm also aware of the parking on Dennis Street. Our local laws team have attended the street to check if any of the vehicles are unregistered, so we could have them moved. And they found that no unregistered vehicles or trailers were on the street. This evening, on the council agenda, parking management will also be discussed as an item.
Thank you to our officers. Next person I have on the agenda is Peter Thompson. I believe Peter is not in attendance this evening. I'll hand that over to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. Peter has submitted a statement rather than a question. If you accept the statement to be read out, I can ask that Kylie Bennett, the general manager of Community, respond.
Is there any reason why that we've accepted that part of our question time?
Through you, Mayor. I think the question is, what is council's response to the situation in Ukraine? Even though it sits behind a statement, perhaps we can get Ms. Bennett to answer that. Thank you.
Thank you for the statement and question. And through you, Mayor. In 2022, the mayor made a public statement expressing deep concern about the conflict in Ukraine and extending council's support and standing in solidarity with members of the Darabben-Ukraine community. Council also reiterated its sustained and unwavering commitment to human rights and peace, be it locally and globally. As a member of the Welcoming Cities Network and as a refugee welcome zone, council continues to stand ready to welcome Ukrainian refugees and work with our partners and local communities to provide support and assist with resettlement.
Thank you very much. The next person I have on our agenda this evening is Geraldine Wood, which I believe she's not in attendance this evening at gallery. So I'll hand that over to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Geraldine has asked the federal government last week announced, excuse me, what the actual question will be for the upcoming referendum in November. A proposed law to alter the constitution to recognise the First Peoples of Australia by establishing an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander voice. Do you approve of this alteration? I would like to ask the Darabben Council, who represents ratepayers, residents and business owners of Darabben? Does the council support the proposed alternation to the constitution?
Thank you. Over to our officers.
Thank you for the question, Geraldine. And through you, Mayor. Council is seeking views and advice from the Darabben Aboriginal Advisory Committee and the Wurundjeri-Warung Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation. We are also listening to ongoing community conversations following the critical principle of letting Aboriginal people and community voices lead on this matter. In due time, having followed cultural protocols, council may take a more definitive position.
Thank you. The next person I have for our public question time is Marion Atwater, sorry, Atwater, who I believe is not in attendance this evening. So I'll hand that over to our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. Marion has submitted three questions. The first one is in relation to Agenda Item 9.3, the parking permit policy. Why should the public accept that the peer review at attachment C to the report is indeed written by an independent expert? There is nothing in the officer's report or attachment C that describes the qualifications or expertise of the alleged peer reviewer, nor is there any description of potential competing interests that might interfere with the independence of the peer review recommendations? Question two is also related to Item 9.3, the parking permit policy. Can the legal review of the draft parking permit policy please be made available for public inspection? It is surely a matter of public interest that we can see whether the legal firm chosen to review the draft policy has any potential bias or competing interests. The third question is in relation to Item 9.13, Towards Zero Homelessness in Darabben. And it relates to the third dot point of the officer recommendation. That council undertakes advocacy work through M9 and the Northern Council Alliance for Government Funding to support initiatives to address and respond to homelessness, including additional crisis and affordable housing, housing-first and functional zero approaches. I have checked the Darabben Council annual report 2021/22 and the Freedom of Information Part Two Statement of 2022. And neither the M9 Alliance nor the Northern Council Alliance are listed as committees that hold meetings open to the public or whose minutes are publicly available. Is it possible that the Memorandums of Understanding of the M9 Alliance and the Northern Council Alliance with Darabben Council and other councils do not properly address the overarching governance principles for public transparency?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marion, for your questions. The peer review in the report that is included in the meeting agenda, so Stantec Australia, a registered engineering consultancy that have parking policy expertise and have no known conflict of interests. A legal review was undertaken to ensure alignment with council's statutory obligations. And as this review is legally privileged, it can't be shared.
With respect to the third question, council has a range of partnerships, alliances and committees it participates in, like some other groups. The M9 and Northern Council Alliances are partnerships that are guided by MOUs rather than a joint committee of council, which has a range of requirements as prescribed in the Local Government Act.
Thank you. This next question is actually, I have three that have been clustered together. I have Ruth, Annette and Charlotte. I believe they're not in attendance this evening. So I'll hand that over to our officers.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor. As mentioned, we have got like questions that have been grouped together. The questions relate to capital works, investments, usage data, environmental impacts, the state government grant, the Melbourne Water Drain, the relationship with the traditional owners. These all relate to the Northkirk Golf Course.
Through you, Mayor. And thanks for your questions, Ruth, Annette and Charlotte. Council will consider an item on tonight's agenda on the Northkirk Golf Course. And we encourage you to follow the meeting discussion and debate, where some of your questions will be answered. In relation to capital investment at the site, council is currently preparing its draft budgets for 2023/24. And will give consideration to capital investments at the site also. In relation to usage data, we haven't done any work or collected any data for usage of the open space at Northkirk Golf Course to this point. In relation to environmental impacts, works at the site, all works that could potentially impact flora and fauna have been supported by external assessments and qualified staff supervision on site. This has included detailed tree assessment and site flora audits. Relation to the Bracken Creek, this is owned and managed by and is the responsibility of Melbourne Water. So we think it might be best placed to answer your question in the first instance. And finally, the relationship with the Wurundjeri-Warung Cultural Aboriginal Heritage Corporation is an important one to the council. And good progress has been made to date. No specific timeframe has been identified for this important work. But discussions have been positive and professional. And we're hopeful that the outcome will be an enduring relationship based on mutual respect and trust.
Thank you. Last week, Darabben Council awarded nine local heroes. And our next speaker this evening, who would like to ask some questions, was actually awarded the Lifetime Achievement Award. So come up up, Caroline Lunt. Kindly just state your name and suburb.
Yes, Caroline Lunt from Northkirk. Good evening, Mayor, CEO, councillors, council offices and everyone. I did talk to the mayor very briefly. And I'm making a submission, so I'll thank you through that. And I asked the mayor, I asked three questions in my acknowledgement speech and thank you speech. And the mayor said that she was going to Google them. And I said, no, you're not. This is for the, this is, these are big questions. And they might seem frivolous. But the first one was, how many years does it take for red gum to make hollows for habitats? Probably can't Google that. The second question is, how many black-tailed wallabies live on Darabben's waterways, including Bracken Creek? And the third question is, which indigenous plant is the wallaby's preferred food? So they're big questions. And I can give you two answers. But I want the council to act on biodiversity and protect it. So that's why I've asked those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
Through you, Mayor. Congratulations, Caroline, firstly. Just in relation to your first question, while it does depend on the tree's specific location and overall health, red gums are known to take up to 100 years to form natural hollows. These are usually a result of wind breakage, lightning strikes, termite and fungal attack. About the black-tailed wallabies, our team had great fun researching that today, Caroline. We don't have exact numbers of wallabies within Darabben. However, we're aware of a small population of swamp wallabies in the north. And isolated sightings around Thornbury and Northkirk area. We think that there's probably fewer than a dozen in the municipality. And finally, wallabies tend to eat mostly grasses, but have been recorded eating newer shoots of many indigenous trees and shrubs, particularly young wattle saplings and tree violets.
Thank you. And just lastly, I'd like to give one round of applause to Caroline again, because that was a massive achievement for her award last week. And that is the end of tonight's question time. I'll go over to submissions. We have three people making submissions this evening in relation to items that are on the agenda. So I will actually call those people when it comes relevant to the time. I also have one person this evening who would like to make a submission in relation to a petition that will be tabled this evening. I will call on that person. And they will allow them for two minutes to speak on those submissions once the petition has been tabled. So I'll go over to I. Yes, councillor Eni?
Mayor, I wonder whether we could ask those people who are here for submissions, given the possible length of the meeting, whether they'd like to make their submissions now as opposed to waiting, which is something we've done in the past? Is that possible?
Yeah, that is possible. Do I need to vote? Have a vote on that? No. Okay, happy to go ahead with that. Happy to go straight to submissions. So. Yeah, I have to, I have to ask for the petition. So what I'll do, I'll ask for the petition to be tabled first. I believe that councillor Dimitriatus has a petition that she would like to table this evening. And I'd just like to ask, while you get ready, that you've actually circled that to all councillors?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus.
I seek to table a petition improving traffic safety in the streets surrounding Thornbury High School for noting and refer it to the CEO for consideration and response concerning. I tabled the petition signed by approximately 114 people. And that complies with the council's governance rules. The petition summary and background is as follows. This area is currently unsafe due to dangerous driving and a lack of safe places for people to cross roads. We think the current level of physical impediments and signage to slow traffic and prioritise pedestrians is badly lacking. This petition started through local residents of Collins and Jones Street, coming together with the school community after consistently hearing and seeing cars driving the wrong way and often speeding dangerously down the one-way street of Jones Street. We all fear there is an accident waiting to happen as local residents, including young children and high school kids, cross these roads frequently. The principal of Thornbury High School let us know he was, he has been trying to improve traffic safety in the area for years. With limited success further, as Jones Street has a rise near the one-way entry, we fear when we are driving our bikes or cars the correct way down the street, that it is only a matter of time before we are hit coming over the rise by a driver blindly speeding the wrong, by a driver blindly speeding the wrong way. The actions petition four, we are concerned citizens who urge our leaders to act now to increase signage and install a mix of physical impediments to slow traffic, avoid cars entering one-way streets the wrong way, and install zebra crossings to support the safe crossing of streets.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriatus. That petition will just be handed to our CEO on that item. I believe that we have one petition this evening from Abid Badarana, Arana Rina? Bad Rina Rana? Is that how you say it? Bad Rina Rana? Do you have a petition that you would like to?
A submission, sorry.
So you can come forward and. Oh, yep. Thank you. Kindly just state your name and your suburb and.
My name is Abin Avbadrina Ryanan. I'm from Thornbury. Live on Jones Street. So thank you for the time and for listening to our petition. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge that we, as the residents of Jones Street and surrounding streets next to Thornbury High School, are very concerned for the safety of our children as well as safety ourselves. I am a resident on 12 Jones Street. And as mentioned by the councilwoman earlier, just on top of the race. And I myself have had very close chafes with speeding drivers who have not been able to see me come out of my own residence. There have been similar instances where a speeding driver has been chased by police pursuit going down the wrong way and missed a couple of cyclists, as well as children crossing road. Would like to see how quickly we can actually get physical impediments, also signage that is more clear that it's a one-way, and try and create a zebra crossing, which is currently not around Collins Street, which is the street leading into Thornbury High School. I understand that there might be budget implications which may not have the council come up with solutions in the immediate future. But would like to ask for some immediate action around Collins Street, which would enable safe crossing of children who go day in and day out to and fro from the school.
Thank you. We have three other submissions this evening that are referring to the agenda item. I'll ask if Julia is in the audience this evening that would like to speak about the parking permit policy? Is Julia in the audience this evening? Julian, is it? There's no N on the end. Oh, you've got Julia. Okay, Julian. Is Julian, and I apologize. The CEO has terrible writing and he hasn't put an N on the end of your name.
I've been, had that mistake make many times. Thank you, Mayor. My submission in relation to Item 9.3 is that the proposal should be amended to reinstate the wording of council's 2125 plan, which at 2.37 reads, "Review to amend the parking permit policy to allow single lot dwellings built after December 2004 that are greater than 300 square metres property with three or more bedrooms and that exist on their own Torrens title, even if the property was previously subdivided, to have the same entitlements to parking permits as dwellings built before December 2004." When I purchased my property, that was the policy in place. And that was something which I took into account. When the lot on which my property exists was subdivided, planning laws did not require any provision of visitor parking. In 2004, when the parking permit changes were made, they were not intended to apply to single dwellings such as mine. What we have therefore is a proposal that is tantamount to retrospective lawmaking. And to do, make retrospective laws is dangerous. It should only be done in extreme circumstances. There are no extreme circumstances here. The fact that the policy reverses the council's previous policy is not specifically addressed in the paper before council. There's no justification made for reversal of its current policy. And in fact, in the policy, in the paper before council, there are three separate sentences that have the effect of obscuring by misleading statements the fact that the policy is proposed.
Fifteen seconds left. If you can kindly summarize, Julian.
Sorry?
You've got 15 seconds left. You can kindly summarize.
Finally, council has an obligation to address any limitations on human rights. The paper does not do this. And to that extent, it is flawed. And therefore, I ask council to reconsider the proposal before it. My submission is that you reinstate the wording in the 2125 policy.
Thank you very much, Julian. I appreciate it. The next person I have is Carmel Hartey. Is Carmel available, please? In reference to the parking operating, management operating procedures?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Carmel Hartey and I'm from Elfrington. The submission is in relation to 9.5, which is the review of electronic gaming machine policy. I'm coming with the perspective of having lived experience due to gambling harm as an affected other. This lived experience has given me insight into the destruction that gaming machines has on lives in a very destructive way. So my submission is, I wish to, first of all, commend Darabben Council's commitment to reducing harm associated with electronic gaming machines, gambling within the Darabben community with the strong EGM policy. I am, though, disappointed to see a weakness of the policy with councillors being able to use their discretion on if an event is warranted to be held at an EGM venue. This goes against the whole organisational approach to minimise harm from EGMs. And priority one being that councillors and council officers lead by example through their official duties. So council should amend this to ensure that the EGM policy isn't weakened. And can. So council should amend this to ensure that the EGM policy isn't weakened and councillors show leadership and hold themselves to the same admirable standards as community groups. And I've got another 24 seconds though. Yeah, so why I'm so passionate about this, I do have lived experience and so I do have that perspective that other people who don't have lived experience have. And it's admirable what this council is doing. So it'd be a shame to see it weakened and it opens up a window for things to get worse. So that's my submission.
Thank you Carmel. Appreciate you coming this evening and expressing your submission. Thank you. I have one more this evening, which is Caroline Lunt. Thank you Caroline.
Thank you, mayor. I'm looking at agenda item 9.6. I'm making a submission on behalf of biodiversity, of course, that call this space home. This submission also relates to my three questions that I've raised in my acknowledgement after receiving a lifetime achievement award last Thursday. So there was a purpose. In your breathing space strategy, this council states green space is deeply respected, understood and protected by everyone in the city. And locals act as custodians of the natural world for current and future generations. I have to disagree. I've been coming to council meetings now for decades, listening to residents pleading with council for this council to take care of its quiet life. I also ask you to do this tonight. For the sake of saving any biodiversity around the Northgood Golf Course, I ask that each councillor, especially the ones with green votes, make an amendment to the motion that $70,000 will be spent on developing a cycle pedestrian path on the fifth hole, I think. Imagine how $70,000 could be spent on the survey of biodiversity so we know exactly what we've got, exactly how many of whatever species. And then to re-vegetate or rewild, whatever you want to call it, to join the waterways, Bracken Creek to any space there. I'll show you what cyclists can do to our quiet life if you give me a minute. Your policies and strategies can help to destroy biodiversity in Darabhan. I ask that you change this motion. And I just wish, so I have shown councillors this before, I've got a box of dead.
Can you keep speaking into the microphone?
Lizard. This one has just been run over by a car, but I do have lizards run over by bikes. And on behalf of biodiversity, this is what people do. This motion needs to put biodiversity first. People have enough paths, enough open space.
Can you kindly summarize, please?
Would you like me to pass this around?
No, thank you. That is all for this evening for submissions. I appreciate those who have come this evening to express that. Councillors, we have a large agenda this evening and obviously there's a lot to get through within a time limit and in our governance rules. I'll be permitted questions for our officers prior to commencements of the debate for each item. But if I think there's been sufficient time for questioning, under governance rules, I will exercise my rights and ask for the debate to finish and then commence the debate. Sorry, I meant for the debate, sorry, for question time to finish and start the debate. In relation to amendments, if no councillor indicates the opposition or a desire to speak to the amendment, I will be put in the amendment to vote immediately under the governance rule 4.76 of number 14. So can we please note first that 9.2 has been withdrawn this evening? And I believe that councillors, can we also have a procedural motion to change the order of business this evening for 9.1, 9.8, 9.9? And then the remainder of the agenda stays the same and mover and second to be put to vote. I have a mover, councillor Rennie. Do I have a second, councillor Lawrence? All those in favor? That's been carried unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, I also have a procedural motion.
Sure, councillor Dimitriatus.
I wanted to move a procedural motion that item 9.6 be deferred.
9.6? The Northgood Golf Course?
That's correct.
Do I have a second for that procedural? Councillor Greco. Okay, I'll put that to vote. All those in favor? I have councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Lawrence, councillor Greco and councillor Williams. All those against? Councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy.
Excuse me, mayor. Can I seek some advice on this question?
Sure, I'll hand that over to our governance. Thank you.
Councillor Lawrence has declared a conflict on item 9.6. Would that affect his eligibility to vote on a procedural item involving 9.6?
Mayor, conflict of interest is.
Councillor Dimitriatus. It's okay, excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Councillor Dimitriatus, thank you very much. I'll have our governance actually answer that question. Thank you councillor Hannan. Yep, sure. So the CEO and our officers will be asking. Best way forward.
Through you, mayor, to answer councillor Hannan's question. I believe councillor Lawrence previously declared a conflict of interest in relation to Northgood Golf Course. If this procedural motion had come up at that agenda item, I believe councillor Lawrence would have not been here as he would have had to absent himself for that item. I think conflict of interest under the Local Government Act relates to not just the item itself, but being involved in relations to decisions in relating to the item as to whether it's heard tonight or deferred. Councillor Lawrence, it's up to you to manage your conflict of interest, but out of an abundance of caution, my advice would be that in terms of your trust in this procedural motion, your conflict remains.
Councillor Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Thank you from the CEO on that advice that's contrary to advice I had earlier. But based on that advice, I was waiting to declare the conflict when the agenda item came up, but I'll re-declare the conflict of interest. And I will say, people do ask me why I declare my relatives' residential amenity when others don't declare their own, but I'll leave that for other councillors to consider. My son lives within 250 metres of Northgood Golf Course and has an interest in relation to residential amenity. Residential amenity in terms of he will be one of the people enjoying this open space no matter what happens. So that's the nature of the conflict of interest. I believe it can give rise to a perception of conflict of interest with a direct residential amenity, residential amenity involved, no property involved. Okay, so I'll be vacating the chamber for the procedural motion.
Thank you councillor Lawrence.
Yep. So I'm going to have to re-put that vote once councillor Lawrence is evacuated from the chamber. So I'll redo that.
If I may, could I just raise a point of clarification? I believe that we already voted on this matter, so I just wonder how we are going to conduct a second vote when we have already voted.
Well, the vote is, at the moment, was tied when councillor Lawrence was in the room, so I haven't used my casting vote, so it has not been completed, to be honest. Councillor Greco.
Through you, mayor. The mayor's correct, the vote wasn't declared and the mayor can ask for a recasting of the vote, which if, I'm not sure, can I just check who seconded the procedural motion?
Councillor Greco.
That's right, so that's fine, councillor Greco is still here. So I think you can put that, mayor.
So I have to go back to the vote again. So all those in favor of the procedural motion to be moved, councillor Dimitriatus, councillor Williams and councillor Greco. All those against, councillor Hannan, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and councillor McCarthy. That has been lost, councillor Dimitriatus.
Can we ask councillor Lawrence to rejoin us, please? Governance?
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Consideration reports this evening, we have 9.1, quarter two financial report ending the 31st of January 2023, financial performance and mid-year forecast update. Councillors, do we have any questions to our officers on this item?
Ah, yes, ma'am.
Councillor Dimitriatus.
Thank you. So I've just been notified about the Local Government Act, section 97.3, which clearly states that the second quarterly report of a financial year must include a statement by the CEO as to whether a revised budget is or may be required. I'm not sure that that's actually been provided in this report.
Over to our officers, thank you councillor Dimitriatus.
Thank you for the question councillor Dimitriatus. Just to confirm the report in front of you tonight, she's reflecting on the seven month period, having been through the mid-year budget review, providing a revised budget for council.
I'm sorry, the question, the actual wording of the legislation said that the CEO must include a statement as to whether the revised budget is or may be required. So there's.
Thank you through you, mayor. We'll take that one on notice and provide a comprehensive answer to you.
But then it's a breach of the law if we pass this item.
Through you, mayor, I wish to check the legislation that's been quoted.
Sure, section 97.3.
If you'd like to adjourn, mayor, I can have a look at that legislation, but otherwise I'd like to take the question on notice, please.
Thank you. Were there any further questions, councillors? Thank you. We can enter into the debate. Do I have a mover in reference to this item, councillors? Councillor Hannan, do I have a second? Councillor McCarthy. Thank you councillor Hannan.
Thank you, mayor. I note the question that's just been raised by councillor Dimitriatus and the response to take it on notice. I would like to move the officer's recommendation on the basis that I believe the report is lawful until we're told otherwise. In fact, more than lawful, I think it represents a lot of hard work from our finance team. I'd like to thank them for all their work and all the advice that's been provided through briefings to councillors during these challenging financial times. So thank you to the finance team. Of course, this is a financial representation of the whole organisation's work for the first seven months of the financial year, ending in 31st of January 2023. So just a few highlights in summary and a couple of lowlights. So council achieved an operating surplus of $61.7 million during this time, which is one.
Councillor Hannan, can I ask you to just stop for one moment? I don't have a timer on and I just want to confirm that we still have live streaming. Thank you, because I know we've had some technical glitches. I apologize, but.
Sorry, yeah, no worries. I'll try to finish before.
Thank you, sorry.
So $61.7 million surplus so far, which is roughly $1.5 million less than what was budgeted in the annual budget. That's the profit and loss so far. And the forecast for the end of the financial year is a small surplus, $1.02 million, but that's actually $7.3 million less than was budgeted. So there's some good and some bad news there. Just a few of the main drivers for this variance on the revenue side, the money coming in, partly a timing issue of $3.5 million in financial assistance grants. 35% of that was received in the previous financial year. That may or may not happen again this financial year, so that does knock out the timings. On the improvement side, a $1.3 million unbudgeted capital grant funding received. So again, council's done well to receive that grant. On the money going outside, the expenditure side, some of the main unfavorable items were an additional $1.6 million in depreciation of a building re-evaluation, although that's a non-cash depreciation. That's a.